Good morning Pete.
Morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Living a virtual world.
Yeah. Still, yeah.
Remember our meeting just a few weeks ago and we said, oh, this probably won't last too long. How silly we were.
Indeed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning Mr. Raymond, good morning Mr. Butler.
Morning.
Trying to prop my camera so you can see.
We do want to be able to see you.
Duck tape, duck tape will solve all problems.
Peter, is it your quarantine beard?
This what?
Is your quarantine beard?
Nice to see everybody.
Hey Carrie, do you know if Wayne is just gonna call in or are we expecting to see him on this?
He was able to do it last time, expecting him. He didn't say he wasn't coming. And I know packets were mailed, I could try to call him real quick.
Yeah, the last time he did it using his phone.
Go ahead here everybody, I don't know if I got in.
You're in Stan, hi.
Hi. Well, let's see.
I don't know Eric, last time he messaged me. So I guess I would, I know he has my cell phone number, so I'll just keep it handy in case he calls.
Well, you have the call in number right on the agenda, so.
Yeah. It's up to you if you want to wait a minute or move forward.
My screen says 7:59, so I guess we can give him the... One more minute to leave anyway.
Yeah. That our official ballot, 8 o'clock.
I like that, I feel like I'm going to church. Alright, well I guess it is 8 o'clock and if Wayne calls in, we can obviously join him, join in. I will do our roll call.
Burton here.
Raymond here.
Here.
Larson here. Okay, let us begin with the approval of the minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes and the annual meeting minutes of March 25th, does anybody have any updates or corrections? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept them?
Raymond will move to accept.
Gibbon will second.
Okay, we'll vote.
Burton I.
Raymond I.
Gibbon I.
Larson I. We'll move on to the treasurer's report, Stan.
Okay, does everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah Carrie's moving the screen, I was trying to move the screen, I couldn't do it, so I guess I don't have control over that. Statement of financial position, we have total current assets of $810,000. Looks like the accounts receivable, we do have a schedule of that, $40,000. Total liabilities or accounts payable, $9,000, there's a schedule of that. Let's go to those schedules, on page two. Age receivables, we have $14,000 due from Elvigen. That's over 31 days old. We're recording a financing lease, this must be an audit adjustment, $34,000. And we have a net receivable or actual payable for the railroad project of seven, almost $8,000, which is netting the receivable to 40. Page three is a list of the payable. Tim Loughlin is owed $400 for landscaping. Nice side. It's a recurring bill. We have legal fees are still there. Of $7,750 that we're accruing as a payable. Page four, statement of activities. Looks like the rent is under budget, we're under budget by $11,000. Centronics, I don't know if we're replacing that. Rental income, looks like we do have the Clark Park rent. Actual $1350. Pilot project fees. And total revenues, we have around $30,000. Expenditures all look in line with prior years. We do have airport utilities, note two. Where note two is. Nothing in the budget for utilities, that's what the note is saying. So we're $3,000 over budget on airport utilities. Page five. It's just the bottom line. But, bottom line, actual year-to-date 25,000, our budget year-to-date is 25,000. So our budget shortfall is because of lack of revenues. But our net activity for the quarter is still a positive $5,000. And that's all I got.
Anybody have any questions for Stan on the report? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Burton will make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
We have a second?
Raymond will second.
Okay, we'll vote.
Burton I.
Raymond I.
Gibbon I.
Larson I. Alright, thanks Stan. We will move on then to the bills and invoices. Anybody have any question on any of these bills that are...
Okay, I'll log out.
Thanks.
Alright, thanks Stan.
Hi Stan.
Thank you.
Okay, any question on the bills and invoices listed, I see on my agenda totals 14,634, 84? Okay, hearing no questions.
I'm sorry Eric, what's causing the postage to be so high?
When we get into the administrative services agreement, there's a, I'm not, I don't know how that number is pulled in. That's something that we get through accounting, I can ask Kathy Jo to drill it down, there's a, it's not just postage, it's copies, postage, IT travel. It's all one lump sum. That, it's part of the administrative services agreement, the IDA pays a portion of that to go back to Commerce. So if you, for next time if you want me to, I can try to get more actual numbers from the budget about how that was pulled together, but it comes from a few different sources.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that amount tracking what we budgeted for that line?
I believe so, yeah, everything, well, I mean our budget is a little out of whack because of the, of the lack of rent. Other than that, our, yes, we're in line with our budget, but.
Okay. Any other questions on the bills and invoices? Okay, do we have a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve them, Brian.
In a second?
Raymond will second.
Okay, and we'll vote.
Burton I.
Raymond I.
Gibbon I.
Larson I. Okay, let's move on then to old business FEMA application, yeah.
Eric, just a sec real quick, because we're doing this virtually again, just like last time, could you just quickly identify that you would like me to go ahead and sign the checks? To get them out, since we can't get everybody to sign them, initial the vouchers, and we'll put this in the minutes with the checks.
Okay, so this is to authorize the amounts that would require two signers?
No, just for, normally everybody signs the vouchers and initials them, and because we can't do that, last time you just, you know, put it for the minutes, just a directive that the executive director can sign the checks and mail them off the payments.
Do we need a motion of the board to do that, or just a note?
I think you could just say it for the record.
Okay, well unless there is an objection, then we will authorize the executive director to sign and mail these approved invoices?
Good, thank you.
Okay, let's move on then to old business FEMA application railroad update.
Okay, so we've been working on this, we reported last time, we had an exploratory call with the committee. Alex and I sat in on a almost two hour phone call on Monday, a discovery call with the FEMA reps. There were a number of people on the phone, we had Doug Ellison from the railway on the phone, and a lot of the questions he had to answer regarding the actual damage and description of the sites. There's some more information that they need, they're looking for GPS, actual latitude longitude coordinates, and they're talking about the next steps of identifying what the damage is. They, because of the social distancing and no contact, some of the work that they're gonna be looking at, they're gonna do it virtually, I'm not sure how they're doing that yet. But we've been working on getting the files uploaded into the system that they are looking for. Unless something has changed since I last talked to Alex about this, we still are in the pre-discovery phase and we haven't actually been approved yet to apply, is that still correct Alex?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we're sort of waiting on that still, so at any time they could, you know, come back and say it doesn't fit their criteria, but we're moving forward as if it does. The total damage that we're talking about is, at this point it's about $16,000, $17,000, so it's not huge like the last project was. But, and that, it's good because it puts us into a certain classification, that is a little bit easier of a process versus if it were a huge project. So we're still working with the railway, we're working with them and getting our grants portal updated with the information that they requested, but we're still moving forward.
Carrie, along the line, one thing you had mentioned, or I saw where you were saying that FEMA no longer pays for administration fees?
Well, it's, yeah, it's not that they don't pay for them, it depends on the, it depends on the project, and it depends on the application. So when we were talking, when we talked about the administrative services agreement. It was our understanding that we did not get an administrative fee into that grant the last time. I need to look into this one to see if they allow for that. That I don't, it's my understanding that they don't always allow it, like I know USDA doesn't.
I'm not sure, because Pete, if you ever ran into this case where you didn't get some administrative for overseeing the project?
No, but it's, it's been different, sometimes it's a percentage of the project, and sometimes it's actual hours, I'm not sure where they're at now.
Yeah, it used to be, they used to do 3% is what they used to do off the total project cost, and it was automatic, which was a lot easier to manage.
They are asking, well sorry, they do, they are asking us to track our hours, so, because we don't have an actual like final amount yet and we haven't officially applied because we're still in this like discovery process. They did say to us on the phone on Monday, just track our time that we're spending on the project, so I'm hoping that that means we'll get something for it in addition. I don't know what the scale or the percentage of that will be, I don't know if it's 100% reimbursement or a percentage. So for right now, we're just tracking the time that we're working on it, and we're hoping we'll get something out of it.
Good, good, no, you should, you should, I mean unless, unless something changed that I haven't heard, they still reimburse you, you know, for your, your time and effort and stuff that you put in, it's based on a percentage basis. Sometimes, because we, I ran into this before, and even when I worked for FEMA out of the Kirkwood, that sometimes the administration fees were almost as much as the project fees for these small projects.
Right. And I don't, yeah, and I'm not sure how they calculate that, I don't know if they, they have their own rate that they pay, or if they go off of your current salary and give a percentage of that, I'm not sure how they calculate it, but we are tracking our time.
Unless it, unless it's changed, again, like I said, it's been a couple of years now, but unless it's changed, they'll go by what your salary is, you document to them proof what you're getting paid per hour, then you put your hours and stuff in.
Okay.
Okay, anything else then on FEMA application? Alright, let's move on to new business then, administrative services agreement. All right, let's move on to new business then, administrative services agreement.
So everybody, uh, we talked about this last time, um, but we wanted everyone to have a chance to take a look at it. Um, this is something that normally is done at the end of the, the year, and, um, it had not been put in, so, um, DCC has signed off on it, Commerce will sign off on it as soon as the IDA does. Um, I did have a couple of questions, which I'll, I can address, um, sorry, just grabbing a paper, I can address everybody, uh, that came up. One of the questions that, uh, Randy was talking about was about the portion that, um, IDA gives back to DCC on new projects. Um, and so we taught, I know somebody else had a question about that, in the agreement, it talks about it being twenty-five percent of new project fees and fifty percent of railroad revitalization fees. Um, I don't know, and one thing we're, we're trying to find out too, is the last pilot project that was done, this was before me, I don't know if that money was ever, the pilot money that we got back from Norwich Solar. Uh, I don't know if a portion of that ever went to DCC. Um, Kathy Jo will be in tomorrow, and, um, it's on my list of things to discuss with her, but, uh, this is pretty standard, it's because of the, the way that we split, um, duties between the economic development parts of Shenango County. The portion that goes back to DCC is also there because DCC can, can do loans, and IDA cannot, so it's a way that a portion of the funds that we earn through our projects can go back into the, the community and the economic development of the county. Um, so that's my understanding why that percentage was there. Um, I did check with a couple colleagues in the southern tier, and this seems to be pretty standard. I don't know if this, I don't know if this board was aware of this, I don't know if you've seen this agreement before, hopefully you have, um, or, you know, if you wanted to discuss that further, but I just wanted to explain that.
I, I think the agreement has come before us, uh, prior, so, I, we can probably strike the part that refers to the railroad project, because that was a one-off.
Right, well, then that's why Randy brought it up about the current project, is if we're going to get money back for it, um, you know, should we leave it in there for now because of the work that's being done? We, we can, or we can leave it for this one, and then see if anything is even realized from it, and then for the twenty twenty-one, strike that from it, but that's, that's up to you guys.
Anybody have any thoughts on that, one way or the other? Accepting this issue, everything else in this agreement appears to me to be the same, or are there any changes from the prior year?
Um, as far as the IDA is concerned, the only difference was, um, in the, at the end of the agreement, um, I changed the language about how this, um, is renewed. It used to say that if it wasn't renewed, I think within sixty days or ninety days, the contract was void. I thought that was not in the best interest of what we're doing here, because of things like this, where something sort of got missed and we didn't know it. So instead, I said, um, I changed it to, if the, like, if the contract is not signed, the previous contract, um, will continue until the new one is agreed to. Um, versus it just being done, and nobody has an active contract, I didn't think that was good language, that was the only change.
Okay, and, uh, this has already been approved by the other entities?
Uh, DCC has approved it, and then Commerce will approve it, um, as soon as we do.
Anybody have any comments on it? Okay, do we have a motion to accept the agreement?
I'll make a motion. Oh, I'll second then.
Okay, so we have Pete and Brian. Okay, we'll, we'll vote them.
Burton, I.
Raymond, I.
Gibbon, I.
Lars, an eye. I do like how we've maintained the same order around the table, it's really, very disciplined. But I'm not even really kidding, because I've been on a few of these where everybody just yells at the same time, and that, that doesn't work. Okay, uh, let's move on then to Saturn power application.
So we, this is the one that we were waiting for, uh, we finally got the application in, and, um, we do have, um, Alex sent yesterday, we did get some updated information from them regarding the pilot payment proposal. At this point, the only thing we're asking for the IDA to do is, you know, have you had a chance to look through it, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at this yet. This is what Alex sent yesterday about their proposed pilot. There are a couple things, you know, the, the funds to Commerce, we need to change that, it's actually the IDA. Um, but, uh, at this point, do you have any initial questions? We still need to do some vetting, we need to take a look at the numbers, compare it to the previous agreements, um, contact the entities, so we still have a lot of work to do on this. They are willing to be on a future meeting if we would like them to answer any questions. So at this point, do you have any, any questions right now, um, as we start to move forward in the process?
What? What's the feel? I'm sorry. What's the feeling of town, county, and school on this?
Shane, has this gone through the county planning board yet?
Um, it did go through the town and county planning board, but after we've had some experience with these, we're finding out that the FAA doesn't actually review glare. And one of the big concerns that we, as the planning department and the airport have, is what will this do to our runway departure and approach? You know, if there is a glare, I mean, you know, it's supposed to be according to the FAA done during the planning board review. And because we were under the impression that all of these are reviewed by the FAA before they're approved, and, you know, after everything is done. Um, a glare study, to our knowledge, was never done with this. So I guess, and my concern is, if we approve this project, it could impact our economic, you know, forecast for the airport.
You got a timetable, Shane, on when you think you'll find out, or, or are they responding, the applicant going to respond back to the question?
I have no idea, they've already been approved by the town of Norwich, so, I mean, there's nothing more we can do on our end, it's more of, you know, I guess, maybe that's part of the contingency, if they want to get a pilot, they have to do a glare study, I don't know.
Why don't we ask them to do that?
I mean, I would appreciate that if you did.
Um, I see no reason not to, we've got a little time anyway, and if it's a factor that we should be considering, then by all means, let's consider it.
Yeah, they want to do an exploratory call, Shane, would you be able to be on that call with us to talk about this a little bit more, you seem to have, or, or, you and anybody else from the airport, that would be best to have this conversation with to better explain?
Yeah, just let me know when it is.
Okay, yeah, I think that's.
Alex, do you happen to know how this dollar amounts are proposing compared to the other projects we've approved?
Uh, in terms of, uh, the kind of, uh, overall picture, or the megawatt per hour?
Well, isn't it kind of the megawatt per hour amount that we've been looking at?
Uh, this, in general, uh, falls in, in sort of the same, um, that same kind of range as some of our previous projects. The Norwich Shenango solar was, uh, four thousand per megawatt hour, the Puckett one was, uh, I think two thousand?
I think twenty-five hundred when we finished.
So, so the, the first one was forty-five hundred, and then we did two thousand on the second one, because that was a, a large-scale commercial power, whereas the first one was a community power, is that right?
That had a lot to do with it.
Wholesale.
And of course, with the escalator, the escalators might have been slightly different as well.
So, and, and is this one a community solar like the first one?
Uh, yes.
So it would appear to me that they're proposing a lot lower rate for this community solar than the first community solar.
Yes.
Have they given any logic behind that?
We haven't had our exploratory call with them yet, uh, we wanted to get some initial feedback, um, from you all first to see what questions you might have, and then we're going to have an exploratory call.
There's my first question. My first question is, why is it so much lower than the last one we did?
Yeah. It's definitely significant lower, they did note on here that, um, that the Norwich Shenango project is two and a half times bigger than their project. Um, they, they did have some, some notes in here, but we definitely can have that conversation, and I, it definitely didn't, shouldn't be lower than what we're doing in green, there were reasons behind that. So if it's, it's, if it's similar to Norwich Solar, then, you know, we said we were going to set a standard and make people stick to that, so, I mean, they need, I think they need to have some decent justifications as to why, um, it's such a different rate.
You know, again, I guess my ongoing struggle with this is, we don't seem to have a uniform approach, if we have one community solar paying forty-five hundred, and then these guys come along and say two. You know, if I'm the first one, I might feel bad about that, like, why am I paying that much more than, than the next project, and, you know, maybe scale is another factor to put into this, but it sure would be nice if there were some kind of guideline that would, you know, otherwise, every time this comes up, everybody can come to us and say, you know, whatever number, and without a rationale, or some kind of a, you know, a nice matrix of for projects of this size, you know, up to however many megawatts, it's one rate, and they're bigger, it's another rate, and rather than ad hoc every one, you know, I mean, maybe that won't be a huge difference, but it just seems a little odd to me, you know, that somebody might pay eight and hundred, somebody might pay twenty-five hundred, somebody might pay forty-five hundred, and there's no real solid, you know, this is why we did that.
If I may. My understanding, under the new, uh, siting bill for large-scale solar and wind projects, that we lose all control of what we charge. Um, that is going to be determined by the state, uh, was, it was what I was told in a conference call Friday. So, that we're not sure if it's twenty megawatt or twenty-five megawatt, that was not clear in the, in the budget legislation. But when you get to projects of that size going forward, the state's going to do the siting, the state is going to pre-approve regions for large-scale projects based on the infrastructure, and the state is going to take control of all the fees that we charge, and the payment in lieu of taxes determining those rates.
But that's not final yet, that's, right, that's, that's still in discussion.
I believe that was signed in the budget bill.
It was in the budget bill, and really, what we're waiting, what, what the, right, now what you need is, we need the agencies to write the rule. But that's all part of what was in the budget bill.
Would it be for all projects though, or only for projects of certain sizes and?
Certain sizes, Eric, and it's not even clear whether that size is going to be twenty thousand megawatt or twenty-five thousand megawatt. I'm just throwing that out so that you guys know that there's going to be a differential here in how we, how we do this going forward.
Okay, well, uh, not having the information in front of us, I guess we proceed on, uh, until notified otherwise, huh?
Yeah, that's what they're advising that we do, I mean, it's, the state is trying to make things easier for green solar projects, this is where this is coming from, because of the go-green initiatives that are happening right now, but, yeah, a lot of that is muddy, you know, the, the legislation that was put through and, and how there's, I mean, the, the first thing that we heard was that it was, they were making it easier for the siting to be done, they, the state was going to handle the siting, and I know that the county board supervisor meeting, we talked about that. Um, how the pilots are actually enacted and what level means it goes to the state is still being debated, and the EDC has been sending some information about it, but not, not clear guidelines yet. So, until we're told differently, I, I think we just proceed as we've been, and try to be as consistent as possible, that's the only thing that we really have.
And this project is smaller than that, more, more taller than those guidelines, right, Carrie?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is so small, it doesn't fall into those guidelines anyway, so.
Right. Right now, anyway.
Carrie, when you have a discussion with the, with the, uh, group, Tiffany group, have you mentioned to them, or will mention to them, about they should be reaching out to this Norwich City School District to make sure that they're online, or what's going to be developed and, and, uh, put into the pilot?
Yeah, well, we'll go through, have a contact, contacted all the entities, and like before, we'll make sure that we do it ourselves, and have a meeting, um, either phone call or, you know, Zoom or something, to make sure that everybody is at the same, on the same page, because, like, we don't want to go to a public meeting setting and suddenly find out that somebody's not on board with us, so, yeah, we'll definitely make sure that we take those steps.
Okay, any other questions on the Saturn power? All right, let's move on then to internal controls review.
Okay, let me just switch screens here. I'm getting really good at this. All right, so, um, there was a question was asked about our internal controls, and we do have, um, an internal controls policy. Um, I don't know if everybody had a chance to read through this, and if you had, I guess at this point, if you have any questions about how things are being controlled, or, you know, to just know that you've reviewed our procedures, and that you are okay with them as they are. Or if you'd like to discuss any portion of it, I'll just, uh, I guess throw it back to the board and, and see where your questions might be.
Well, the one question I can't, when I reviewed this, Carrie, the only thing, the one question I have for you is, since you have, I know you had dedicated people that review and receive the receipts, you know, receivables, so that they stamp them for deposit on and stuff, but there is, there's certain, certain payments that you, you expect every month. If that payment doesn't come in, is there a process on how that's looked at?
Uh, well, it's been a, it's, it's been something we've been, um, trying to develop a little stronger, and we, you know, we have our checks and balances, it's been between, um, between our accountant, uh, noting that something has not come in, and um, Alex has, has oversight of the, of the accounting procedures, so, um, I'm also bringing in our, our front desk person to have a better handle on what's expected each month and what's not. Um, so I think between everybody that we have here, we don't have, fortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, we don't have that many projects that it's, it's a nightmare to try to track, so coming up with a checklist of what's expected, and, you know, at this date, we haven't seen this, why is that? Um, so we are, that's something that we've, we've developed, um, I don't think that previously existed like this, so, um, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the internal controls? I think to Carrie's point, we don't have that many bills each month, and, uh, seems like, uh, we have a pretty good handle on them. All right, if there are no questions about the internal controls, uh, let's move on to the deferral policy.
Okay, so we talked about this again, last month, we had the, um, the request from Cascoon Farms, um, to defer rent, which you did agree to, so thank you, they were very appreciative of that. Um, I think I noted that Astrydic, they have a loan with Astrydic, and Astrydic also deferred. DCC has also been doing this, we've had almost all of our loans that we have, some, they, a deferral has been requested for ninety days. Um, and so we quickly pulled together a policy through DCC about how we're going to handle loans. Um, IDA is a little bit different for right now, uh, you know, we'll talk about this, but right now, we're not allowed to do loans. Um, but we do have a rental property, but, so what I did with the deferment part, policy, was I took the language from DCC and just changed it over to IDA. And I, I separated out loan deferment and rental deferment, because we do have the rental, or the lease, I guess. Um, so just very basic language about, you know, act of God, state of emergency, economic hardship, um, that they'll, they, I did the Palm request, the executive can cease the next ACH payment. Um, and then, and then, you know, it comes to the board to decide. So if the loan deferment is granted, um, missing payments are added at the end of the loan period, no payment of interest accrued during the deferral period. And then an MOA would be sent to the borrower outlining the deferral process. In the terms of the rental deferment, the IDA board will discuss the parameters about that, and discuss on a case-by-case basis if missing funds will be realized. Um, you know, this is a, a sort of an anomaly, I don't know if something like this is going to happen again, or in the future, you know, if we had a renter at the airport property, you know, how would we handle that? And it might depend on the business, um, how you might choose to, to handle that. So, um, that'll be up to the board to decide, if you are just saying, yep, we're going to have no rent for three months, and we're okay with that loss. Or, you know, we want to try to get a portion to cover some of our basic utilities, uh, I think in the, in the Cascoon Farm, we don't. Or, you know, we want to try to get a portion to cover some of our basic utilities. Uh, I think in the, in the Cascoon Farm, we don't have any um, expenses. So I think to just forego the rent is, um, is a good, is a good, was a good choice to make for them. Uh, but in something like the airport property, I'm thinking you might come to a decision, well, you know, we might forego their lease, but we want to at least make sure that our, you know, the landscaping and the, the electric is paid. So I didn't want to make it a blanket. They don't have to pay anything because it, I think it might depend on the property.
Uh, just a question on the technical part of how this would work. Uh, it, it looks like in the policy, if there is an incident like that, then i- if they ask, we automatically grant, you know, we automatically stop the ACH and then we talk about it?
Yeah, well, so that's what we did with DCC because of when this happened, when everything went down and when payment, payments typically come out of accounts on the end of the month. Um, so we had a lot of requests coming through and I, we didn't have time to pull together a board meeting in time. So the best we've, we, for DCC at least, we felt the best thing to do was to stop the payment. Um, because if, if, if we're going to draw money out of them and it's going to bounce or, you know, they don't have the funds because of something like this, it was a circumstantial, it was, you know, it was an issue where it was better to just stop that payment and try to get together as a group to discuss it. With IDA, it's a little more complicated because we have to advertise our meetings. We can't just pull together anytime we want, like some of the other committees can. Um, so it's up to you, it's, it's really, it's up to the board if you want this language in there or not. We, for D, from DCC, the, the idea was it's better to not draw the money. If they're really hurting that much that they're asking us to stop the payment, something must be really wrong. Um, until we can get together to discuss it.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on.
Yeah.
How it works, so. Uh, questions on the deferral policy? Hearing none. Do we want to have a motion to approve the deferral policy?
Raymond moves to accept.
Give him a second. Give him a second.
Very good. And then we will vote.
Bert and I.
Raymond, aye.
Give an aye.
Lars and I. All right. State budget and pending legislation.
Thank you. So, and, um, just again on that, Cascoon Farms was very appreciative. So thank you for what you did to, to help them. It, um, definitely helped lighten their load. So, um, I just wanted to talk about a couple of things. I've, I've been trying to send you articles as things have been progressing with, uh, COVID nineteen and what executive orders are coming through. There were some things in the budget. Um, I had gone to, uh, Albany, um, March eleventh for Small Business Day. And there were some things that we were discussing with, uh, our elected officials about the state budget. Um, one of them was the prevailing wage, um, which really impacts IDAs. Um, I sent you some language that the EDC sent me about that being basically pushed through and what this board is going to do, this review panel. Um, it's for projects over five million dollars. Uh, basically prevailing wage. What, what's happening is this review board will basically get to say if prevailing wage applies or not. Um, it's, it's a little, um, not clear how that is actually going to happen. And, you know, what that, it's basically, they can do what they want is what, you know, EDC is telling us. They're, they really don't have any guidance. If they feel a project needs prevailing wage, they'll grant it. Um, it could be very political. I'm guessing it will be as far as whether that happens or not. Uh, most of what we do here, um, does not meet that threshold, but it doesn't mean it never will. So it's just something to know moving forward, um, that that was pushed through. There's talk right now of an executive order to allow IDAs to loan money. Um, that previously has not been the case, uh, because being a public entity and feeling, you know, favoritism, they don't want any of that to happen. I, I bring that up because I, I spent some time on the phone with our lawyer yesterday. I am working on a proposal right now for DCC, um, to be able to do, um, bridge financing, bridge, uh, loans to people affected, businesses affected by COVID. Um, I, I think we need to do what we can to help, you know, like we talked about some of the money that we make through IDA goes back to DCC to do good for our, our economy. A lot of people are struggling. I know you know that. Um, the SBA funding, the P three program, idle money, it's, it's not easy to get. It's very complicated. Nobody is getting answers and businesses are hurting. And they don't know how they're going to be able to open their doors again. So we've been trying to come up with different ways to help them. And one of them was to come up with a loan program. Uh, I'm on a bi-weekly call with, um, all of the EDO and IDA reps from the southern tier, and many of them are starting to do these programs. Tompkins County has a great, uh, program right now. Uh, I'm, that's what I'm looking to model after. Uh, they do a six-month, no interest, no payment, bridge loan up to twenty-five thousand dollars for businesses. Um, at the end of the six months, a balloon payment is due, or they'll turn it into a loan. So the hope is that people will finally get their funding that they've applied for, but in the meantime, we can help them. And that's sort of what I'm looking at. Um, this, I was thinking about it in terms of the IDA because we had five hundred and thirty thousand dollars or so left over from the railroad project that the auditors had recommended that we close out that account. Everything's been paid. Let's move it over. So we did last week, we moved thirty, thirty-seven thousand of it into our operating fund and we moved five hundred thousand into our money market. And it just got me thinking that, you know, we have this money, what good can we do with it? Like, I would love to be able to say, yes, let's, let's, you know, do this program. Let's have DCC fund part of it. Let's have IDA fund part of it. Um, but still IDAs cannot loan money. One of my colleagues in Steubin County, I had a conversation with him and he said that their IDA, they spoke to their lawyer and their IDA was able to invest a portion of loans into their LDC for this program. Um, he said an investment of money is different than a loan of money because the investment means you're going to get it back. So it meant there had to be some wordplay with the LDC that they were going to make the IDA whole. Um, I talked with Matt yesterday about it. I'm not ready to propose that to you yet. And I'm really honestly hoping that the executive director, or sorry, um, there's an executive order to start allowing IDAs to do something to help our businesses. I bring it up because if that happens, I will be reaching out to you and we maybe, might try to have another meeting to talk about this. I just, I feel like if there's anything we can do to help, we should, and we have this money. So why don't we invest it back in a way that's going to make a difference? Um, I haven't heard any more about the language. I also had a conversation with somebody who actually used to do our audits, um, Al Zimmerman. Um, he worked, used to work for Piaferr and Lyons. He's now with the state comptroller's office out of Binghamton. I spoke with him on Monday to ask him from an auditor's perspective, what he thought about this program. And, and he said, you know, he's like, I can't speak for all auditors. He said, but I can't imagine anybody, you know, dinging the IDA for doing something in, during such an unprecedented time. Um, he's like, the language isn't clear. It's a little fuzzy. Yeah, you could do wordplay with investment versus a loan. Um, but from the state comptroller's side, he, he didn't see it. He's like, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not telling you you can do it. He's like, but I'm just, I don't see how this would be a bad thing. Um, that's not good enough yet. I'm not proposing, I'm not proposing it yet. I'm still talking to Matt a little bit about how we could possibly do something, but I just wanted to bring it up now to see if you're like, no, we, we definitely are not interested in that, or if there's a way that we can do it, you might be open to that discussion.
Well, two observations I would make, uh, quickly. One is that at our present burn rate, we don't have the deepest pockets in the world. So without a lease on our building, we're going to have a deficit of what, sixty-something a year? So that'll last us a while, but we should be mindful of that if we're going to start getting in the business of putting out money. And the other would be, DCC has a finance committee and a review process for these loans and, you know, they have oversight. Uh, we're not really set up to do that. And so if we were going to do it at all, I don't think we want to do it.
No, I.
Transfer the money to DCC somehow and let them do it. And the other thing would be, you know, if someone, uh, like Carrie and we've sat in on DCC meetings, I, I don't think you can lend out that money with the idea you're ever going to see it again. I don't know what our default rate has been over the years, but it's healthy. And, uh, given the present circumstances, pumping money out to businesses, I, I know we all want to help, but like I said, I don't think we should kid ourselves. There's going to be a lot of difficulty and, uh, and a lot of people who will end up not being able to pay us back. Which might not be a reason not to do it. It's just, you want to go in with your eyes open. So anyway, those would be my observations.
Okay. Yeah. My, my thought would be if we did get into this business, I guess I would say, is that we would decide to maybe give a little bit, and not all of it. I'm not saying, you know, I know, I know what our financial circumstances are and at present, my plans to rent that building are not happening the way I had hoped because, you know, things have sort of, everything's been halted. But if we were to do something, it would be to invest the money into DCC, into their program. And on the other side of this, DCC has money. I mean, they're, they're, they're sitting on a little bit and they could certainly fund this themselves. Um, I just was thinking of it as a more of a collaborative effort if the IDA and DCC came together, um, to kind of show support for Shenango County. But I, I definitely hear what you're saying and I'm not proposing that yet. Um, and yes, we, we have a gap ourselves that we're trying to, to realize, so.
Yeah, right. Uh, other thoughts from the other board members?
No, just the only thing I'd say, Eric, I agree with you in regards to our financial situation with the IDA, just how, how long we can sustain where we're going. You know, it's, but I can understand what Carrie's saying. Maybe there is like a way to come up with a percentage or something, twenty-five percent or not to exceed twenty-five percent could be, you know, used for, for, for this loan program or something, but I don't know.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts? All right. Well, okay, I guess we can continue to explore the idea and.
Okay, thank you.
See what we come up with.
Okay. If I hear anything else about it, I will certainly reach back out to everybody.
Okay. Anything else on the state budget and pending legislation?
No, I will see what information I more I can find as they, as they pull things together about the green energy. Um, you know, solar, wind, it's, it's a hot topic. So everything is somewhat on hold, but I, I fear that, I fear that with the state of things, um, there are items being pushed through, sort of under the wire. And I, I know EDC is on top of it and our, our partner is the Unshackled State. Um, but I'll do my best to continue to send you updates as I receive them.
Okay. I guess we're moving on then to Commerce Shenango updates.
So we've been really busy. Um, again, I, I've been trying to keep, um, your, this board to update it. Every time I send a board to the Commerce Board in DCC, an update, I send it to the IDA board as well. So hopefully you've been seeing those and you're seeing the projects and programs that we're doing here. Um, you know, I bring it up because we, you know, we're all looped in together, you know, IDA is its own entity, but you're, it's within Commerce Shenango. And I think it's important for you to know what's happening, um, in case any of you get questions from businesses or companies who don't know, you know, what to do or where to go. We're here as a resource for people. We're doing counseling. We've been, uh, we're very up to date on the grants that are available, the P three program, the idle money. Um, we've been doing what we can to counsel people and help them through this process. Um, you know, there's, uh, tax benefits from the IRS about, um, retention of employees. There's a lot going on. Um, so if you are not familiar with what's going on, I just wanted to refer you to our Commerce Shenango, uh, website. We have a page specifically designed for COVID, COVID nineteen, and we're doing updates regularly on there. Um, we have a list of restaurants in Shenango County that are still operating. Um, we've just kicked off a fueling the frontline initiative where we're, um, getting donations from businesses and individuals. We're going to be sending food regularly to the workers at CMH. Um, and that's been a, that's been a great, uh, start to that. It was, uh, Mary Minor's Brainchild. She's our Director of Membership and Programming. Um, but all the stuff that we're doing here really, it reflects on all of our organizations and because IDA is a part of, you know, what we do, we work collaboratively together. I just wanted you to know what we've been doing and to see if you had any questions about the programs that we're offering and, um, you know, what we've been doing to stay in contact with the community, um, was the first part of it. And, um, another part I wanted to let you know, in case you don't know, um, this Friday is Alex's last day with us. Um, he gave his notice a few weeks ago. And so he's been working with me to update me on process and procedures, making a handbook about the IDA and, um, just as it refers to work with you. So moving forward, I'll be assuming, um, the duties in the interim until we find a replacement. Um, I'm working on a job description and hopefully we'll have that posted by the end of the week. Um, I'm not in a rush to do it. I think, um, with everything going on, it'll be difficult to try to hire somebody in the midst of this. I have put out some feelers to my, um, economic development counterparts in the southern tier to let them know that I had an opening. Um, but, uh, for the interim, it'll, um, you can direct questions to me, but I just, um, Alex is on the call, but I wanted to let you know, if you didn't already know that, um, his last day was Friday and to thank him for his work that he's done, um, at Commerce Shenango for the past five years and, uh, his support with the IDA.
Okay. Well, uh, that's everything I see on the agenda. Is there any other business we have to transact?
Now, if anybody has any questions.
Any final questions for Carrie? Okay. Uh, I assume we don't have a need for an executive session today?
No.
Very good. Do we have a motion to adjourn then?
I'll make the motion to adjourn. Brian.
And a second?
Raymond, a second.
Okay, we'll vote.
Uh, Bert and I, sorry.
Raymond, aye.
Give an aye.
Lars and I. Thank you all for joining in, uh, remotely. Hopefully one of these days we all get together in person again.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric.
All right, bye.
Thank you.